Good morning. We'll start our meeting with the pledge, if you'd please your eyes. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, will you open your prayer?
Heavenly Father, we come to you once again, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together. We ask that you would guide us as we make the decisions that we make, that we would go in the direction we need to go in, and would do the things that would be pleasing to you and helpful to the people in Sota County. Or we ask that you be with each one in this meeting, touch them, watch over them, guide them, keep them. We ask these things in your precious name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. It is September 18. We're just going to jump right in to approving the meeting minutes of September 11.
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
I will vacate the chair and second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests for appropriation of funds...
Any comments or questions on appropriation requests? Hearing none.
I make a motion we approve the appropriation request.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests for appropriation of funds regarding sanitary engineer...
Any comments, questions on item three? Hearing none.
I make a motion we accept the appropriation request.
Approved.
Approved.
Approved, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I will second.
I can't read.
It's all right.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests for appropriation transfer of funds...
Any comments or questions on our transfers? Hearing none.
I make a motion we approve the transfer of funds.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests for fund transfers...
Any comments, questions on item five?
What's the difference between transfer of funds and fund transfers?
Well, regular appropriation transfers are within the same fund, and fund transfers are from one fund to another fund.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
I make a motion to approve the fund transfers.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for various funds, moral obligations, and then announced certificates in the total amount of $1,051,456.
Any comments or questions on the docket? Hearing none.
Make a motion we approve.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of bid award for the engineer rubber tire loader, regarding the engineer...
Say that three times fast. The bid award for the engineer rubber tire loader. I almost screwed it up too. Should be awarded to Southeastern Equipment Company, Inc. in the amount of $125,928.88. Any additional comments, questions?
I believe they were the only bidder, weren't they?
They were the only bidder. That's correct.
Yes, and I read those bids last week, just to clarify, because there were two amounts that I did not realize. One was a delivery, and one was a pickup.
Perfect.
And they chose the pickup.
Great. And that was reviewed by our engineer, recommendation made. Additional comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of CSEA 4D contract between the Sota County Child Enforcement Agency and the Sota County Prosecuting Attorney.
All right, this is a CSEA 4D contract between Sota County Child Enforcement Agency and the Sota County Prosecuting Attorney for effective administration and support enforcement program in compliance with Title 4D. This is effective 7/1/25 to 6/30/26. Total amount, $266,522.57. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion we approve the contract.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests to attend meetings...
Any comments or questions on requests to attend meetings? Hearing none.
Make a motion we approve the request.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approval to purchase two used vehicles from Haynes Chevrolet in South Webster regarding JFS.
All right, so we have a request to purchase two used vehicles. There's a '22 Chevy Malibu with 19,000 and change miles. $16,920 for the agency vehicle, and a 2023 Chevy Equinox has 17,000 miles on it for $24,800. This is for the fraud department, and they are using their biennial fraud control and prevention allocation. So this is coming from their funds. Both vehicles were put out to bid. Once again, this is their funds. This helps keep down on mileage costs and control their... Better to control the budget there. So, any comments, questions?
Just clarification, you said two new vehicles. These are new to them, used vehicles?
Correct. Yep, one's a '22 and one's a '23. Still low miles, less than 20,000 miles on each. Yep. Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve purchase.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of 2026 rate renewal acceptance regarding subcode...
So we are in the insurance renewal phase yet again, and over the past couple of years, it has been a relatively larger increase. This year, still an increase, but it is lower than what we're seeing across the state and really in the private sector. It's going to be a 3% increase on our cost for insurance for our employees, their employee-only, employee spouse, employees with children or family plans. We are still working through the cost saver program, so that's not included in this rate. This is just the flat rate, but it's essentially a 3% increase. Comments, questions?
We did meet with the insurance people last week, and they were pretty excited that it was only a 3%.
Yeah, they were excited because we were, our loss ratio was 104%, so we actually spent 4% more than we took in in premiums last year. So the fact that it still only went up 3% and not something else to cover was encouraging, especially when they're seeing some of their private sector employers seeing 20, 30, even 50% increases in their insurance rates. So 3%, while we don't like to see increases, we'll definitely take it.
Yeah.
Additional comments, questions? All right.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of rates.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request to purchase a 2024 Chrysler Pacifica and to transfer the 2020 Toyota Sienna that was damaged in an accident to the commissioners for auction.
So we did have a auto accident with the Sota County Veterans Service Office. Their 2020 Toyota Sienna was rear-ended. It was totaled, mostly due to the wheelchair lift and everything in the back. It's very expensive to redo those, so it was totaled. We still get to keep the vehicle. We can transfer it from their inventory to our inventory and essentially put it up for auction, but also at the same time with them purchasing a new vehicle to be able to take care of our veterans. Comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve the transfer. Purchase and transfer.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution for PA funding income maintenance to be used to cover child support state match ceiling excess regarding JFS.
So this is a resolution from Job and Family Services for the PA funding income maintenance of $194,083.80. This is to be transferred to the child support state match ceiling excess. Something we do every year. It's kind of a pass-through. Any comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution and transfer.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approval to transfer a county truck from Dogden Kennel to Earl Thomas Conley Park.
We did get a request to transfer a truck between departments. Both of these departments are under our jurisdiction, but in terms of for the inventory that we keep track of, so from the Dogtown to our ETC Park staff. So, any comments, questions?
Just basically trying to keep the vehicles that we have running and transfer them around where people need them, other than having them sitting somewhere, right?
That's right. If there's no other comments, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resignation from the Sota County Airport Authority Board...
We did receive a resignation from the Portridge Regional Airport Authority effective 9/17/25. This is from Angela Khan. She has served well on this board for the last several years. Excellent member of that board, but her professional commitments are kind of pulling her away from the ability to make some of the meetings, so she feels it's best to step down from that board at this time. I do know that we have received a recommendation from the board for replacement. They are not up to consideration for today, but Commissioner Smith, please review that, and maybe we can put that on the agenda for next week. But Angela, thank you so much for your service. Anytime we have people on these boards, it is a big lift. It's a big time commitment. They are pouring back into the community, and I appreciate our volunteers that choose to give back continually to the county. So thank you, Angela. Any additional comments or questions?
I appreciate the service that Angie has done, and I've known her ever since, well, she was really young when we were in high school. So, trying to keep myself out of hot water here, but I've known her for a long time, and she's always been willing over the years to step up and do things. So if she's saying that she's getting a little busy, then I have to believe that. So, that's all I have.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests for appropriation transfer of funds...
Any comments or questions on our transfers? Hearing none.
I make a motion we approve the transfer of funds.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of requests for fund transfers...
Any comments, questions on item five?
What's the difference between transfer of funds and fund transfers?
Well, regular appropriation transfers are within the same fund, and fund transfers are from one fund to another fund.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
I make a motion to approve the fund transfers.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for various funds, moral obligations, and then announced certificates in the total amount of $1,051,456.56.
Any comments or questions on the docket? Hearing none.
Make a motion we approve.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of bid award for the engineer rubber tire loader, regarding the engineer...
Say that three times fast. The bid award for the engineer rubber tire loader. I almost screwed it up too. Should be awarded to Southeastern Equipment Company, Inc. in the amount of $125,928.88. Any additional comments, questions?
I believe they were the only bidder, weren't they?
They were the only bidder. That's correct.
Yes, and I read those bids last week, just to clarify, because there were two amounts that I did not realize. One was a delivery, and one was a pickup.
Perfect.
And they chose the pickup.
Great. And that was reviewed by our engineer, recommendation made. Additional comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of CSEA 4D contract between the Sota County Child Enforcement Agency and the Sota County Prosecuting Attorney.
All right, this is a CSEA 4D contract between Sota County Child Enforcement Agency and the Sota County Prosecuting Attorney for effective administration and support enforcement program in compliance with Title 4D. This is effective 7/1/25 to 6/30/26. Total amount, $266,522.57. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion we approve the contract.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request to attend meetings...
Any comments or questions on requests to attend meetings? Hearing none.
Make a motion we approve the request.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approval to purchase two used vehicles from Haynes Chevrolet in South Webster regarding JFS.
All right, so we have a request to purchase two used vehicles. There's a '22 Chevy Malibu with 19,000 and change miles. $16,920 for the agency vehicle, and a 2023 Chevy Equinox has 17,000 miles on it for $24,800. This is for the fraud department, and they are using their biennial fraud control and prevention allocation. So this is coming from their funds. Both vehicles were put out to bid. Once again, this is their funds. This helps keep down on mileage costs and control their... Better to control the budget there. So, any comments, questions?
Just clarification, you said two new vehicles. These are new to them, used vehicles?
Correct. Yep, one's a '22 and one's a '23. Still low miles, less than 20,000 miles on each. Yep. Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve purchase.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of 2026 rate renewal acceptance regarding subcode...
So we are in the insurance renewal phase yet again, and over the past couple of years, it has been a relatively larger increase. This year, still an increase, but it is lower than what we're seeing across the state and really in the private sector. It's going to be a 3% increase on our cost for insurance for our employees, their employee-only, employee spouse, employees with children or family plans. We are still working through the cost saver program, so that's not included in this rate. This is just the flat rate, but it's essentially a 3% increase. Comments, questions?
We did meet with the insurance people last week, and they were pretty excited that it was only a 3%.
Yeah, they were excited because we were, our loss ratio was 104%, so we actually spent 4% more than we took in in premiums last year. So the fact that it still only went up 3% and not something else to cover was encouraging, especially when they're seeing some of their private sector employers seeing 20, 30, even 50% increases in their insurance rates. So 3%, while we don't like to see increases, we'll definitely take it.
Yeah.
Additional comments, questions? All right.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of rates.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request to purchase a 2024 Chrysler Pacifica and to transfer the 2020 Toyota Sienna that was damaged in an accident to the commissioners for auction.
So we did have a auto accident with the Sota County Veterans Service Office. Their 2020 Toyota Sienna was rear-ended. It was totaled, mostly due to the wheelchair lift and everything in the back. It's very expensive to redo those, so it was totaled. We still get to keep the vehicle. We can transfer it from their inventory to our inventory and essentially put it up for auction, but also at the same time with them purchasing a new vehicle to be able to take care of our veterans. Comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve the transfer. Purchase and transfer.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution for PA funding income maintenance to be used to cover child support state match ceiling excess regarding JFS.
So this is a resolution from Job and Family Services for the PA funding income maintenance of $194,083.80. This is to be transferred to the child support state match ceiling excess. Something we do every year. It's kind of a pass-through. Any comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution and transfer.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approval to transfer a county truck from Dogden Kennel to Earl Thomas Conley Park.
We did get a request to transfer a truck between departments. Both of these departments are under our jurisdiction, but in terms of for the inventory that we keep track of, so from the Dogtown to our ETC Park staff. So, any comments, questions?
Just basically trying to keep the vehicles that we have running and transfer them around to where people need them, other than having them sitting somewhere, right?
That's right. If there's no other comments, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resignation from the Sota County Airport Authority Board...
We did receive a resignation from the Portridge Regional Airport Authority effective 9/17/25. This is from Angela Khan. She has served well on this board for the last several years. Excellent member of that board, but her professional commitments are kind of pulling her away from the ability to make some of the meetings, so she feels it's best to step down from that board at this time. I do know that we have received a recommendation from the board for replacement. They are not up to consideration for today, but Commissioner Smith, please review that, and maybe we can put that on the agenda for next week. But Angela, thank you so much for your service. Anytime we have people on these boards, it is a big lift. It's a big time commitment. They are pouring back into the community, and I appreciate our volunteers that choose to give back continually to the county. So thank you, Angela. Any additional comments or questions?
I appreciate the service that Angie has done, and I've known her ever since, well, she was really young when we were in high school. So, trying to keep myself out of hot water here, but I've known her for a long time, and she's always been willing over the years to step up and do things. So if she's saying that she's getting a little busy, then I have to believe that. So, that's all I have.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of emergency resolution to accept the material terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the Ohio... Uh, there's a twenty-two Chevy Malibu with nineteen thousand and change miles, uh, sixteen thousand two, nine hundred and twenty dollars for the agency vehicle and a twenty-twenty-three Chevy Equinox has seventeen thousand miles on it for twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, this is for the fraud department and they are using their biennial fraud control and prevention allocation, so this is coming from their funds. Uh, both vehicles were put out to bid. Um, once again, this is their funds, this, this helps keep down on mileage costs and, uh, control their, um, able, better to control the budget there, so any comments, questions?
Uh, just clarification, you said two new vehicles, these are new to them, used vehicles?
Correct. Yep, one, one's a twenty-two and one's a twenty-three. Still a miles, less than twenty thousand miles on each. Yep, any additional comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve purchase.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of twenty-twenty-six rate renewal acceptance regarding sub code.
Uh, so we are in the insurance renewal phase yet again, and over the past couple of years, it has been a relatively larger increase. Um, this year still an increase, but it is, uh, lower than what we're seeing across the state and really in the private sector. It's gonna be a three percent increase, um, on our, uh, cost for, for insurance for our employees, their employee, only employee spouse, uh, employees with children or family plans. Um, we are still working through the, the cost saver program, so that's not included in, in this rate. This is just the flat, um, rate, but it's, it's essentially a three percent increase. Comments, questions?
We did meet with the insurance people last week and, um, they were pretty excited that it was only a three percent.
Yeah, they were excited because we were, our, our loss ratio was a hundred and four percent. Um, so we actually spent four percent more than we took in in premiums last year. Uh, so the fact that it still only went up three percent and not something else to cover, uh, is, was encouraging, especially when they're seeing some of their private sector employers seeing twenty, thirty, even fifty percent increases in their insurance rates, so three percent. Uh, while we don't like to see increases, we'll definitely take it.
Yeah.
Uh, additional comments, questions? Alright.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of rates.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request to purchase a twenty-twenty-four Chrysler Pacifica and to transfer the twenty-twenty Toyota Sienna that was damaged in an accident to the commissioners for auction.
So, we did have a, uh, auto accident, um, with the Sata County Veteran Service Office. Uh, their twenty-twenty Toyota Sienna, uh, was rear-ended. Uh, it was totaled, um, mostly due to the, um, wheelchair lift and everything in the back, it's very expensive to, to redo those. Uh, so it was totaled, we still get to keep the vehicle, we can transfer it from their inventory to our inventory and essentially put it up for auction. Uh, but also at the same time with them purchasing a, a new vehicle to be able to take care of our, um, our veterans. Comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve the transfer.
And.
Purchase and transfer.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution for P A funding income maintenance to be used to cover child support state match ceiling excess regarding J F S.
So, this is a resolution from Job and Family Services for the P A, uh, funding income maintenance of one hundred ninety-four thousand eighty-three dollars and eighty cents. This is to be transferred to the child support state match ceiling excess. Uh, something we do every year, it's kind of a pass-through. Any comments, questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution and transfer.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approval to transfer a county truck from Dogwood Kennel to Earl Thomas Conley Park.
Uh, we did get a request to transfer a truck, uh, between departments. Both of these departments are under our, uh, jurisdiction, but, uh, in terms of for the, the inventory that we keep track of. So, from the Dog Pound to the, our, uh, E T C Park, uh, staff. So, any comments, questions?
Just basically trying to keep the vehicles that we have running and, and transfer them around where people need them, other than having them sitting somewhere, right?
That's right. If there's no other comments, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resignation from the Sata County Airport Authority Board.
Uh, we did receive a, uh, a resignation from the Portsmouth Regional Airport Authority effective nine seventeen of twenty-five. Um, this is from Angela Khan, she has served well on this board, uh, for the last several years, uh, excellent member of that board, but her professional commitments are, uh, kind of pulling her away from the ability to make some of the meetings, so, and she feels it's best to step down from that board at this time. Um, I do know that, uh, we have received a recommendation, uh, from the board for replacement. Um, they are not up to consideration for today, but, uh, Commissioner Smith, please review that and maybe we can put that on the agenda for, for next week. But Angela, thank you so much for your service. Anytime we have people on these boards, it is a, it's a big lift, it's a big time commitment, um, you know, they are pouring back into the community and, and I appreciate, uh, our, our volunteers that choose to give back continually, uh, to the county, so thank you Angela. Any additional comments or questions?
I appreciate the service that Angie has done and I've known her ever since, well, she was really young when we were in high school. So, trying to, trying to keep myself out of hot water here, but, but I've, I've known her for a long time and she's always will, been willing over the years to step up and, and do things. So, if she's saying that she's getting a little busy, then I have to believe that, so, that's all I have.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, make a motion to accept the resignation.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of emergency resolution to accept the material terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the Ohio, One Ohio memorandum of understanding inconsistent with the terms of the settlement agreements with the secondary manufacturers, Alvegen, Amnil Pharmaceutical, Ap, I don't know what that is, Apotix, Higma, Mylan, Enzitis Pharmaceuticals.
I'm glad you read those and I didn't. Uh, so we've been, um, you know, as the opioid litigation plays out, of course, we, we all heard of the big three and everybody recognizes Purdue Pharma or, um, McCassen or, and, and some of the bigger ones, but these, this is the, what they're calling the secondary, uh, manufacturer. So, this, these are still manufacturers that were included in the, uh, the lawsuit and ultimately the settlement. So, this is, uh, asking to opt into, to their settlement piece as well. Um, as a little side note, I, I'm also on the One Ohio Foundation Board, that is the statewide board for the settlement money. And there will be, um, an, another round of grant funding that'll be released, I believe in December, um, throughout the state and for the regions to consider. Uh, so look forward to that. Um, I know a lot of nonprofits were able to, to get in on that last time. Our region here locally, Region, Region Nine, which makes up of eight counties, uh, focused almost entirely on prevention. While we have funded prevention for a while now through impact prevention, those services were not available in many, many counties, uh, in our service region. So, that's where, uh, the board took their, their first round of funding. Uh, so this next round of funding will be interesting to see where, uh, Region Nine chooses to allocate funding. We had two point seven million, I believe, that we gave away last year, that we allocated last year through Region Nine. Um, but we had something like fifty or sixty million in requests. So, there's a lot of need, uh, to, to address the, the opioid epidemic, uh, with limited funding, but as the funding opens up, I encourage specifically the nonprofits, um, to, to engage with these boards. The reason I say the nonprofits, one thing we decided at our regional level, the for-profits, unfortunately, when you give them grant money, they still have to pay tax money on it. So, it didn't make sense to give, uh, settlement money to a for-profit for them to turn around and give away thirty percent back to the government. So, so we focused, uh, pretty exclusively on nonprofit organizations at that time, so I just want to give that background. But this money does go and follow the One Ohio memorandum of understanding, there's a percentage that stays at the state level, there's a percentage that goes to the regional level, and then there's also, also a percentage that then hits each individual political subdivision. Um, just some background there. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting amended certificate from the Budget Commission.
Uh, any comments or questions on the amended certificate? Hearing none.
Make a motion to accept the amended certificate.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports.
Uh, any comments or questions on the miscellaneous reports? Uh, I do want to point out that we do get a Sata County work release report, uh, from our Chief Probation Officer, uh, Joe Basden. Um, and we had inmate days, uh, worked twenty-six days, inmate hours worked two hundred and eight hours, jail days served twenty-eight days. Um, but what everybody always asks about when you start getting into probation hours and hours worked is, you know, where have they been cleaning up essentially, right? Cause the, some of these folks are used to, uh, clean up some of the road, so I see that we spent some time on Fairground Road, uh, picking up trash there and along U S twenty-three in front of the fairground. Um, they, they assisted out at the Dog Pound, um, they assisted at the park, there, there's always folks here in the courthouse assisting, um, maintenance and housekeeping. And they also went and painted the Rosemount Overlook, uh, there at the, the Clay Township Overlook. So, uh, just some of the projects that they constantly work on, um, and appreciate them, um, kind of working off some of their fines or working off some of their, uh, their, their issues. But I just want to point that out, cause sometimes we keep hearing, well, why aren't the probationers doing it? No, they're out there, sometimes we don't do a great job of sharing what they've been doing, but, uh, we do have pictures where they were out painting the overlook, um, there at Rosemount as well, so, uh, cleaning up some graffiti. So, appreciate their, their work there. Any additional comments or questions on our miscellaneous reports? Hearing none.
Make a motion to accept the reports.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
That's the end of our agenda, uh, we do have a public hearing at ten, uh, so we do have time for questions, uh, items on agenda. Mr. Will Shug?
Hey, good morning, guys, thank you.
Good morning.
Uh, earlier you were talking about the Airport Authority resignation and everything, this kind of piggybacks with that. Has there been any kind of other interest in facilities being placed out and businesses at the airport that you can talk about at this point?
Um, I'll talk very high level, how about that?
Take whatever you go.
So, there's definitely interest, um, at the airport, um, in airport property, some of that property is sitting in SOPA's name. Uh, some of that property is in the county's name, uh, there has been multiple entities reach out and inquire about, um, potential development. Um, one of the hurdles that SOPA overcame through the, the work of Ryan Brown and the, the board out there, um, Benastar did have an option on the, believe twelve acres sitting right beside the chip factory, um, that was baked into their lease, they had first right of refusal. Due to the activity happening out there, we wanted to see, hey, are you guys expanding or not, what's going on? Um, after some conversations, they're, they're, they're happy with their footprint right now, they didn't see any reason to, um, expand in the immediate future and they also, as a good partner, did not want to hold up any potential projects as well. Um, so they did update their lease to, to eliminate their option on that land, clearing the way for, for SOPA to work with, uh, some of the, the companies that has been, um, reaching out to them. Um, so now we know that, that land is free, um, that land is, uh, available for development and it's a matter of who has the best, uh, project and who has the best deal. And, uh, so some exciting things happening out there. Uh, there's also been interest in the twenty-two acres on Benastar Schoolhouse Road, um, but it's very preliminary conversations. But, once again, economic development very much moving forward, there's multiple people touching it, um, and, uh, a lot of really good energy and activity in spite of kind of the other stuff that's, that's happening, uh, through the court system. So, uh, appreciate that question, but there's definitely interest out there, um.
Uh huh, great. I'm not finished with the airport. A couple of years ago, there was discussion about, uh, some monies potentially coming in to do work on the runway to allow, you know, for different types of aircraft to land. I know it involved a long-term E P A study and everything, has there been anything moving forward on that over the last, you know, couple of years?
So, uh, yeah, so there's a, there's an active entity right now that's been trying to figure out an, an option to, uh, do multiple things. And we did give them a non-binding M O U to move forward with, with their plans. Some of that consideration is, and this is within defense, so anything within the fence has to have an aviation component. Um, one of those things potentially is an aviation school for mechanics, uh, and pilots, um, a small data center, some potential solar. So, they're, they're working together to generate revenue for the airport, but then, how do you start preparing yourself and putting yourself in a place where, um, some of the smaller electronic aircraft, uh, the, the air taxis, if you will, um, how do you have infrastructure in place as that gets more prominent? The, the long-term thought process is that, um, you could have a service sitting out there that would connect people to Cincinnati to then jump to, uh, one of the larger planes. So, they're still very much in the research planning phase, they're trying to figure out some funding, uh, to, to pull it off. Uh, very interesting projects, nothing that we've com- committed to, uh, but we did give them, and this has been several months ago, uh, Bill, that we, we gave them a, a non-binding M O U to say, hey, move forward, go ahead, try to find some grant money, if you can pull this off, we'll, we'll look at it then to, to come to a conclusion on, on what that could be. Um, but overall, there, there's a lot of activity happening out there at the airport.
Good, thanks for the update.
Yep.
I know we can ask a lot about, last question, uh, that I had this morning, uh, you were talking about, uh, the, the One Ohio, uh, settlement funding and, and everything. I know this is separate from that, but at one time, we were the only county that had not accepted a settlement offer. I was just wondering the status of that current legal action.
I have no status to share, we are still, uh, the only county that has not settled with the big three. Uh, I know our, our legal team is looking at that, it's, uh, it's kind of at the federal court, um, whether or not they'll decide to, to take up the case or to, um, send it back to the, the Southern District, um, so we'll see. It's still, the, the wills of the legal system are slow at times, uh, to say the least, uh, but the, no status that we've received lately on that.
Okay, guys, thanks for the updates.
Appreciate it, Bill. Alright, any other comments or question, in, in house, come on Todd. Welcome back, sir.
Well, I told you guys last, well, we was in the middle of, you know, naming it after Kathy Coleman, the shirt came in, so we brought you one to show you. Now that'd be the Vern Rife Day, Friday, that we've got scheduled, will be named after her. I'd like to show, you know, present this shirt to you guys.
Yeah, if you would, um, go ahead and unfold it and kind of hold it, that camera's probably looking at you right now, Todd, if you want to share the front of it and the back.
Can you see it?
Uh huh. So, in memory of, uh, Commissioner Coleman, and, and that means the world to us, Todd, and, and I know.
Well, we will see that her family gets the shirt, you know what I'm saying, and, uh, we just, you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Todd.
Like I said, that's, that's what we said, we said it. You know, we keep our word, when we tell you we're doing something for, uh, the kids and the vets and stuff we're doing, and Kathy was already on our list as soon as, as soon as we knew, you know, what I mean, what happened, so.
And, and, and you know this, and I'll share it anyway, you know that your hard work, uh, was adored by Kathy.
Oh, she loved it.
The, the trout derby and the kids, and, uh, it was near and dear to her heart, so, it's, it, appreciate the.
That'd be Friday, you know, and he'll, he'll guys, so, it'll be the twenty-fourth of April next year, that Friday, and we'll have it, and then we'll give, uh, her family some shirts and you guys can come out and watch her Rife kids scream and holler and have a blast again, I mean, that was.
It was a great time last year.
Yeah, they caught over seven hundred fish.
Wow.
How I know that, Eric Sparks ended up cleaning them.
Someone had to clean it.
So, you know what I mean, we knew, there was three of them, cleaned them, so, I mean, it was, uh, it was fun, so. But that's what I wanted to show you is what we, we got going on in Fessin, that's October the twenty-fifth, at nine o'clock in the morning, out to the house like always.
Yeah.
So, we'll keep on going, I just wanted to, that came in and I told you when, you know, when.
Appreciate that.
Sorry playing and stuff, I just wanted you to have one.
Thanks, Todd. I, I know, Todd talked to me before I was appointed as, as Kathy's replacement and, um, I assured him at that time that I understood that this was important to Kathy and that I would do everything I could to help and, and to be a part of it because I knew it was important to Kathy, and thank you, Todd, for the shirt.
But it's important to the kids.
Yeah.
That's who matters.
Yeah.
The kids and the vets, Matt, we don't, Matt, I, we're able-bodied, we can do stuff.
Yeah.
But the kids and the vets.
Yeah.
Matt, that's what I look at, I don't pay attention to me and stuff, I don't want me that stuff, we're all able-bodied, they're not.
Yeah. Well, Todd, it, uh, once again, thank you for that, that recognition. Alright, any other comments, questions in the house? Any comments, questions online?
Denny Portusa asks, is the public paying for Brian Davis Defense Fund? Was Brian Davis ever arrested after being charged with felonies? I put a public records request in, but no, got no information.
Okay, so, no, we're not, the county is not paying for any defense fund. Um, the only thing the county is currently paying is, um, payroll and benefits, and that is through the Ohio Revice Code. While somebody is on leave, they do get leave with pay. Um, that's the only thing we're paying for in terms of being arrested, is that the second question, was, was Commissioner Davis arrested? Uh, I don't believe so, uh, I know paperwork was served, um, by the sheriff regarding the, the charges and the allegations. There is a arraignment hearing, um, tomorrow, I believe it's at nine-thirty, um, so at which point, uh, he'll present in front of the judge for, um, you know, what, the arraignment process. Outside of that, um, no, I don't believe any arrests had happened.
The only other question, Denny Portusa asked, and I'm not sure what he's referring to, what the, what date does the new splash pad open?
What date does the new splash pad open? Would that be, if it's Market Square, and I'm guessing at, I'm guessing Danny, uh, Denny, um, that is at the nonprofit, Market Square, uh, group. Um, it is a water feature, I don't know that I've heard a date of when that'll be completed, that's the one in Portsmouth. Um, so, that's, uh, once again, that is not in our purview, it's actually not in the, the city's purview, that is a nonprofit organization that's been right, raising funds specifically for that park. So, hopefully we get some more information for you, but, um, I, I don't know the date.
That's all I have.
That's all we got, alright. Um, we, oh, we have two minutes, um, so, Commissioner Smith, do you have anything to fill two minutes of time?
The, um, the only thing, I, I hated that Bill left because he was the one that spurred this this morning, but today is National Roundabout Day and they said.
I love a good roundabout.
Yeah, roundabouts were coming to you someday. The state has said, oh, we love roundabouts and we're putting them everywhere, so, don't be surprised if you see a roundabout pop up somewhere someday, don't put in by the state because they love them so well. Um, the, the only real thing that I have to talk about is, um, we have, um, we've had a situation with the Elks. Um, there's a pond out to the Elks that actually the county owns because it is a fire prevention system for, um, Country Club Drive. There's a dry hydrant into that pond and that pond has been leaking for, since two thousand seventeen, and it's an ongoing project and, and I just started on it this week and basically because of how things have drug out, we're almost starting square one again. So, we're working on that and hopefully we'll get that finished and, and put behind us to where that, that, um, that's one of those things that's been lingering for a long time that needs to be taken care of, and hopefully within the next year or so, we'll have that done.
Commissioner Smith, I appreciate you taking the, the charge on that one, that is, there was funding allocated even prior to myself getting in office to address that issue. So, thank you for taking that up to hopefully see through to completion. I know it's critical, one for the Elks, uh, cause they also use that pond for their irrigation system, but, but more so than golf, also the safety of the Western Hill subdivision. Um, so thank you for, for taking that up. Uh, we are officially at ten o'clock, so we do have our, our public hearing regarding Dogwood Ridge Heights Edition Number Two. Uh, is there official language I need to read for that, or do I just open the public hearing?
Just in the matter of.
Alright, in the matter of, uh, a public hearing regarding, uh, Dogwood Ridge Heights Edition Number Two, this is the vacation of an alley, um, up there. I, I can assure you that there is no alley there, uh, it's a, it's a someone's yard essentially that's still on the plot, uh, plot maps, it looks, it's, it's still listed as an alley. Um, that probably hasn't been used in, I don't even want to guess, decades and decades and decades.
I'd say fifty years.
Fifty plus years, yeah, so we did go look at it, as is our duty, we drove out there and said, yep, this is where it would be, um, so.
Actually, a garage built on that.
There is a garage on the alley. Um, so it's been there a bit, but this is the public hearing to see if we have anybody in favor of or against the vacation of that alley. Any, nothing, no public comments, great, uh, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, so the public hearing is officially closed on that matter, at which point we'll probably take, do we have a time limit on which, on when we can move forward with, um, an actual vote on it?
Uh, I forget how many days it is, but there's a.
There's a mandated time.
Days after the public hearing and then we can move.
So, just so you know, the, we'll, you'll get to hear about the, the alley one more time, uh, when we bring it up for a potential, uh, vacation of that property. I actually don't have, um, anything really to share today, so with.
Can we vote to close?
Oh, I'm sorry, can we, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I kinda didn't take a motion to open.
Do I need a motion to open?
I think so.
Alright, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open.
Great, I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to close.
I will make a motion to close.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Uh, thank you for keeping us on the straight and narrow with, with how we should be handling ourselves. Um, we do have an executive session at eleven o'clock, uh, that is to consider constant confidential information related to economic development assistance according to O R C. Um, we do have an executive session at 11 o'clock. Uh, that is to consider constant confidential information related to economic development assistance according to ORCE. Once you 1.22, so we will not, um, we will not adjourn at this point. We will, uh, entertain a motion to recess, at which point we'll come back here at 11, then go into executive session to speak with legal counsel regarding some economic development stuff.
I'll make a motion to recess at this point.
And I have a second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. It is 10:03, and we are now recessed. We'll be back.
All right, welcome back. It's eleven o'clock. I'll entertain a motion to reconvene.
I'll make motion to reconvene.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session considering confidential information related to economic development assistance according to ORC 121.22G A and B. Which legal counsel?
I will make motion to do exactly what you just said.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. And we're in executive session. We'll be back. Aye. And we're in executive session. We'll be back.
Welcome back. It is 11:54 and we are now out of executive session. Appreciate the time spent there with our legal counsel. We do have a consideration on the table regarding a CRA, which is a community reinvestment area. This is an economic development tool that essentially sets aside, and we did this with the most recent housing property there on the west side, the housing project there. But this is setting up an area as a CRA that we would potentially be willing to do tax abatements up to 75%. By setting something up as a CRA does not mean they automatically get the tax abatement. It just says, hey, as an economic development marketing ability and kind of putting it out there into the world that we would be willing in this space to do tax abatements. This specific property is in Green Township, so this would be a resolution establishing and describing the boundaries of a Green Township community reinvestment area in the county and authorizing and improving related matters. The property itself, as many people would understand it, it is not county property. It is Norfolk Southern property, which is essentially what the boundaries are as of set up in the CRA and submitted with the CRA. Many people in our community would recognize this property. It's close to 900 acres. Once again, it's Norfolk Southern property there in Franklin Furnace. There has been rumored, gosh, over the past several decades even, in terms of possible development. There's been a lot of effort made by the county to increase capacity for water and sewer at that location. It has fantastic electrical access as well and energy access. But we're being asked to, if we would entertain a CRA for that site, to make it more competitive as potential developers continue to look for places to move and to build. Any comments, Commissioner Smith?
No, not at this time.
Nothing at this time. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution establishing and describing the boundaries of the Green Township community reinvestment area in the county. And before we entertain that motion, I want to be very clear specifically to the school, to the township, to the fire department. We would definitely have conversation should somebody decide that they want to entertain this property from Norfolk Southern to make sure that whatever deal would be set out there that is beneficial to the entire community. I know there's some sensitivities specifically in Green Township with some past tax abatements, and so we're very sensitive to that. All we're doing today though is saying, yeah, we're willing to set up a CRA for that area. So I did want to clarify that before we even entertain the motion. But if there's nothing else, I would entertain the motion to adopt the resolution.
I will make that motion to adopt the resolution.
Thank you for that. I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
So thank you for that, and we will be using that to better market the Norfolk Southern property. That is the end of our meeting for today and our agenda for today. Any closing comments? I think you probably already had some earlier. I have nothing, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
And I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. That's all we have. Have a great weekend, and we'll see you next week.